I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Morganton City Council, January 6, 2014. This time, I'll call on our fellow councilman Forrest Fleming to lead us with our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Forrest. Now, I'll call on Pastor George Logan of the New Day Christian Church to lead us with our invocation. George, thank you for being with us.
It's bow and prayer. Father, we thank you for this time together. We thank you for your grace to this county and this community, this city. Thank you for our successful 2013. Thank you for providing all the necessary things needed to survive and to strive as a local community, as a city, and as a government. And we pray, Father, for this upcoming 2014. We pray for your wisdom, for your counsel, for your direction. We realize, Father, that the only way to survive and strive is that your hand be upon this community. So, we trust you to do so and to be so. We pray, Father, for your protection over all of our officials, from the mayor to the city councilmen, to the police officers and police chief. We thank you for the privilege and the honor of asking for your protection over them. And we pray, Father, that as they go throughout the duties and responsibilities of this year, that you'll give them clear direction, that you'll give them precision in all their decisions, that your favor would be so abundant and aboundfully upon them that you will protect them with your favor like a shield, and this community like a shield. And, Father, we thank you for the full disclosure, and we thank you for the democracy. We thank you, Father, for just the privilege of being a part of this community. And we pray, Father, that indeed, in every way possible, this community will be just that, a community united with one voice, with clarity, and believing and acting on the same things. This we ask, and trust you for this coming year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, George. Introduction of our city council, and we'll start on my far right, Ronnie Thompson, city councilman; Forrest Fleming, city councilman; Louis Vina, our attorney; Mel Cohen, mayor; Sally Sandy, city manager; Sidney Simmons, city councilman; John Cantrell, city councilman; Kelly Russell, recording secretary; and tonight, we have Joy Hearn-Guzman interpreting for our deaf community. Our retirees' resolution. Pat Duckworth, if you would come to the podium, I will read a resolution and come present it to you and give you a check also, two of them. Goodness. Just right behind the microphone. I'll be right there. Resolution honoring Patricia D. Duckworth. Whereas Pat D. Duckworth was employed by the city of Morganton as a Secretary I in the Water Resources Department on March 7, 1994; changed to Secretary II in the Water Resources Department on June 2, 1997; promoted to Administrative Specialist in the Water Resources Department on July 1, 2004; and whereas Patricia D. Duckworth has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the Water Resources Department and has given his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 20 years and 1 month; and whereas Patricia D. Duckworth retired from the city of Morganton as Administrative Specialist in the Water Resources Department on January 1, 2014; and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Patricia D. Duckworth, express their appreciation for a job well done. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Patricia D. Duckworth adopted this the 6th day of January 2014. Mel Cohen, mayor; Sally Sandy, city clerk, make this an informed motion.
Second.
All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Pat, I'm gonna give you your 20-year pin, too. You've been wonderful. I dealt with you almost every day or two, and you've always been gracious and courteous. That's the secret to Morganton's success, and you're one of them. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank everyone. I've worked here, like I said, like they said, 20 years. I've enjoyed it. I've met a lot of people. I'm gonna miss everyone, and I wish everyone the best, and y'all do a good job for the city. Thank you.
Steve Dyson's not. We have Steve Dyson, who has already been presented his resolution, Public Works Department, Senior Maintenance Worker, Cemetery and Grounds; and Kia-Tulaw, Public Works Department, Groundskeeper, Cemetery and Grounds, retiring. Those have already been presented. And now, we have another check.
Jimmy Phillips.
Jimmy Phillips, I'm sorry. He's not here either. Jimmy Phillips is Public Works Department Supervisor I, Cemetery and Grounds. Now, Mark Talbert. Where's Mark? Mark, if you'd make your way, I need to show you how to get to the car. You're not faithful, are you?
Today's not.
A lot has been said about you and to you already, but I'm gonna read the resolution, and you've got a check here, and the check is for me and the weapon and the helmet, or be for you, fire helmet, right? Resolution honoring Randall Mark Talbert. Whereas Randall Mark Talbert was employed by the city of Morganton as Public Safety Officer in the Public Safety Department on November 7, 1983; promoted to Detective in the Public Safety Department on July 1, 1987; promoted to Supervisor I and Sergeant on June 12, 1989; promoted to Captain on March 29, 1993; promoted to Major on February 9, 1998; promoted to Director and Chief of Public Safety Department on January 25, 2005; and whereas Randall Mark Talbert has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the Public Safety Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 31 years, 8 months; and whereas Randall Mark Talbert retired from the city of Morganton as Director, Chief of Public Safety Department on January 1, 2014; and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Randall Mark Talbert and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Randall Mark Talbert adopted this the 6th day of January 2014. Mel Cohen, mayor; Sally Sandy, city clerk. Motion.
Second.
All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All right, just a minute, I'll make sure I get all these in the right order. Mark, I'll tell you that I read that slowly because that's, the way you were promoted methodically shows your ability and what you've done for public safety, and I'm proud of you. I'm proud of what our department is, and I'm assuming there's 17,000 people in Morganton that are proud of what you've done and what your department has done because you've surrounded yourself with good people, and that was your secret when we had the party for you, and it's worked well for you. And I wanna wish you, I'm gonna bring this to you, but I wanna wish you Godspeed, and then we'll come back and do the weapon in just a second, and I've got another presentation to be done. You're welcome to, in my hand, yes, you're welcome to take that microphone on a light side instead of a dark side, like they had to do in a lot of cases, but this is yours. Okay? Thank you. Much. Take your time.
Said this wasn't gonna happen, but famous last words. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Madam City Manager, Madam Clerk, and members of the audience, I feel like you could, some of you, I'm sure, and I don't know the brand, but there's a T-shirt out there, and it has a stick figure on it, and it says on there, you know, "Do what you like, like what you do." Before 30 years, that was me at Public Safety. You could put my face on that because I enjoyed coming to work. I enjoyed being around, if you will, my extended family, whether they wore a uniform to work or not, because that's how we operated, and that's how we did business. That's how I tried to do business, is to understand that there's a bigger picture in mind. We're just part of it, but there's a bigger picture for all of us to be contributing to and to work toward. The men you see back here at the back of this room, they made me look good, they made all of us look good, and they represented, I believe, the city well. And so, just like living up to the standards of one's family, I felt like it was incumbent upon me to live up to those same standards. I have a lot of people to thank who are here tonight, but also people who are not here who along the way have helped me in my career, who have been giving of their time and contributed to my outlook and my perspective. But I also know that none of this could have happened without, again, the people in this room, members of the council, you mayor, and especially Ms. Sally there. She gave me an opportunity that I'll probably never be able to say thank you enough for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Don't leave. I wanna make a motion to declare as surplus of the Glock Model 23 pistol serial number LXX912 in Fire Services Helmet and sell and present to retired Chief Mark Talbert.
Second.
We have a motion second. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those will be presented by Billy and Ronnie.
And I'm paying the dollar. And it's mine, not his.
I knew where it was coming from.
I don't believe it.
You hear it squeak if he got it out of him.
Exactly.
Okay, Mark, I want you to hang there a second. I wanna ask Forrest Fleming, city councilman, to come make a presentation.
Sergeant Perry, would you join me up here, please?
You probably need to get closer to the mic, Forrest.
Okay, you can well see that Sergeant Perry is Sergeant with the Morganton Department of Public Safety. He is also Chief Petty Officer with the United States Naval Reserve, and in that capacity, he has nominated his boss, being Chief Talbert, for a Department of Defense Patriot Award. And in keeping with that line of thought, the Department of Defense has approved that nomination, and I, as a member of the North Carolina Committee for Employee Support for the Guard and Reserve, am here tonight, Chief Talbert, to present that award to you. If you would now allow me to read the award. Officer of the Secretary of Defense and Career Support for the Guard and Reserve recognizes Chief R. Mark Talbert, Morganton Department of Public Safety, as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Forces. And it is signed by the National Chair of Employee Support for the Guard and Reserve, Paul Mock. Congratulations, Chief.
Mark, do you wanna make another speech?
Here's a little momentum.
Forrest, thank you. Sergeant Perry, thank you very much for being here.
I just simply say it's been a privilege and a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Okay, presentation of service pins. Pat Duckworth's already got her 20-year pin. Jason Oliver.
He's not here.
Not here, okay. Jason is with Recreation Crew Leader, 20 years. Bobby Longo.
Can't be here.
Okay, all right, we'll give him his. And Timmy Kortman. Timmy is with Water Resources, and 25 years also. Okay, we're into public advocacy issues and strategies. I wanna remind the city council of the workshop on February 7th, all day here.
Community.
Community House on February 7, 2014. Okay, Big Brother, Big Brother, Big Sister, and National Mentoring Month proclamation. If you would, Nancy, if you'd come to the podium. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Western North Carolina has provided mentoring relationships to 10,500 children and has served in our Burke County community over the past 15 years. Whereas it is the vision of Big Brothers, Big Sisters that all children achieve success in life. And whereas success in life is put within reach when a child is provided a strong, enduring, and professionally-supported one-to-one mentoring relationship. And whereas strong mentoring relationships positively impact the areas of risk avoidance, educational success, and personal aspirations, and equip children with the necessary tools to achieve. And whereas mentors in Burke County and eight other counties in Western North Carolina give generously of their time and energy to support youth in the community. Now, therefore, I'm Mel Cohen, mayor of the city of Morganton, do hereby proclaim January 2014 as Big Brother, Big Sister Month in the city of Morganton, encourage all citizens to celebrate National Mentoring Month and the 15th anniversary of Big Brother, Big Sisters of Western North Carolina in Burke County with appropriate festivities. Adopted this the 6th day of January 2014. Mel Cohen, mayor; Sally Sandy, city clerk. I'll make this an informed motion.
Second.
All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Nancy, I'll present this to you, and you're welcome to say anything you'd like.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. During the last fiscal year, the Burke branch of Big Brothers, Big Sisters served 48 children in one-on-one mentoring relationships through our traditional community-based program and our school-based program at Mountain Crest and Glen Alpine Elementary. Right now, we're recruiting volunteers for a new program at Oak Hill Elementary. The children in the program are ages 6 to 18 and are facing adversity in their lives, whether it's single-parent families, poverty, or issues at home or school. Having a mentoring relationship impacts kids by improving their grades and increases their chances of graduating from high school, providing the life skills needed to become productive citizens, and giving them hope about their future. Currently, there are nine girls and 17 boys on our waiting list who have asked for a mentor. For all of the adults listening tonight, we invite you to become a Big Brother or a Big Sister. Help us to start something big in these children's lives. Get involved today by volunteering or by participating in our upcoming fundraiser, Bowl for Kids' Sake, next month. We look forward to another 15 years in Burke County, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Nancy. Do you have a phone number?
I do. It's 430-8357.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. This time, I'd like to call on Captain Mark Bradshaw and PSO Joy Belanger. Come up. The Public Safety Outreach Program.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, just to give you an update on probably our second major outreach project we do each year, and that's the Blue Elves Christmas Project. Now, the Blue Elves is a longstanding tradition at Public Safety. The Blue Elves was giving out gifts when I came 20-plus years ago. And what this project does, it collects and purchases toys and gifts, and then we provide those for children that are in need in the community up to age 15. And this year, it's had a great year, and is able to say that we were able to reach 170 children through this project. Now, of course, this project wouldn't take place without some help in the community. I'd like to recognize a few of those. We do get some monetary contributions. All this is through the community. There's no public safety budget line item for this. The local chapter of the Fraternal Order of Police here in Morganton Burke, they provide financial assistance. Also, Pepsi-Cola Balling Company in Hickory has been a longtime supporter of the Blue Elves. And then, this year, we had a new contributor come on board, and that's Mike Ayotte and Morganton Savings Bank. So, they were able to provide some financial assistance to purchase those gifts that we were not able to get donated. And I wanna give a big shout-out to those for helping us with that. Besides the monetary contribution, we also have some other assistance, and I'd like to have Officer Belanger maybe speak about some of that.
That's right. My, oh, my, did we have a good time in the month of December. If you received phone calls, and it looked like a group of Public Safety Officers was having a good time at work, we were. We were able to reach out to those families through the help of Walmart being a large corporation that was able to donate their, some of their returns, some of their bikes. So, there, through the month of December, we turned into bicycle repair personnel. And we were able to come together with about close to 60 bicycles altogether that were able to be just small, minor things, and we were able to deliver those to individuals in the county, or in the city, rather, where a lot of those families live that we supported. So, once again, we had a smile on our face throughout the month of December. It was very important to thank individuals in the community that helped. We usually start out, obviously, there's no specific budget for that, so every year, we're kinda nervous, what's gonna come together? And we would not be able to affect near as many families without the help of individuals in the community. Kmart allows us to set up in front of their business, once again, another major business in our community. And individuals come through, they're able to purchase items while shopping, and they donate it to the program as well. And just to give you an idea of the impact the program has, Christmas morning, I got a little emotional. I had a family member walk to my house that didn't live that far in Morganton, and Christmas morning, an individual came to my door and delivered a gift that the family had come up with to show their appreciation for our work. Obviously, it's, you know, their thank you was directed at everyone, but apparently, we were able to touch some lives through that. So, thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you, George. Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you a lot for what you do.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a few comments. Well, first, I'm sorry, Hunting Creek Watershed Plan Presentation, Equinox Environmental. Jim Borah, Senior Environmental Scientist, is with us. Jim?
Mr. Mayor, council, I appreciate being here. That's Jim Borawa. You're not the first one to have a difficult time with my name, so. I just wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to update you on the efforts being done to improve the conditions in the Hunting Creek watershed. That watershed drains a significant portion of the city on the south side, from the high-rise prison all the way to the Catawba River. As you know, or some of you may know, the Hunting Creek Partners was formed in about 2009, whose purpose was to put together a watershed management plan that would stand as a roadmap for doing projects that would increase the water, improve the water quality and habitat conditions within the watershed. That group is an informal group that consists of a number of local agencies, nonprofits, and the city is an important partner in that group. The watershed plan that they put together was completed in 2011. It outlined the problems facing the watershed, the impacts of the development that has occurred within the watershed. It also outlined the projects that were needed to help improve that, those conditions, and reduce the non-point source pollutants and sediment that are running into the stream that have caused it to be on the state's impaired waters list for a number of years now. And so, the state is now trying to support local entities to try to improve conditions within those types of watersheds. Approximately two years ago, the city council was presented the opportunity to hear about the plan and voice their support for the plan and the efforts to improve the conditions within the watershed. Subsequent to that, the partnership sought out some grant funding and obtained two grants in the amount of $40,000 from the Attorney General's Office for an environmental enhancement grant, and approximately $65,000 in a grant from the North Carolina Division of Water Resources through their EPA 319 program. All of those grants that they've obtained have required either cash or in-kind matches. Approximately $40,000 of match was committed by the partners, approximately which $5,000 was committed from the city. The projects that are incorporated in that effort have included state institution outreach to try to get them to help improve conditions on those properties; landowner outreach to private landowners to help them implement and learn about things that they can do to reduce nutrient runoff, sediment runoff from their properties, as well as other public properties. And then, we've also continued to do some water quality testing to determine specifically where some of those pollutants have come from. The project that's been committed to by the partners has included the installation of some stormwater best management practices at Western Piedmont Community College. That was just completed here in the last couple of weeks, and if you have an opportunity to go out there in one of the parking lots, you can see the stormwater detention basins that will catch the runoff from those parking lots and reduce the pollutants coming from the automobiles that utilize those parking lots from going into Hunting Creek. In that project, Western Piedmont Community College contributed match value at about $17,500. Some of that was cash, some of that was in-kind. They've also worked on developing a curriculum session for their outdoor classroom to be used with their environmental program and civil engineering program. They will actually utilize those BMPs to teach the students about what can be done to reduce pollution. They've also worked on developing a children's environmental education lesson that can be utilized to, directed at 10-year-olds, to impart the importance of protecting the environment and what they can do to accomplish that. And then, another thing that's going to happen this year is we're gonna hold two environmental workshops that will give local agency representatives and landowners the opportunity to come out and look at not only the Western Piedmont Community College stormwater BMPs, but a rain garden that occurs in, that has been constructed within the city, and some other stream restoration projects that have been done in the watershed. What I'm here to, tonight, to stress is that the city has also been a very active and important participant in this partnership. Three items that the representatives on the partnership have wanted to address through the grant projects that we're doing, that has been a proposed storm drain stenciling program in which a small message is put at each storm drain to educate visitors and residents alike to the importance of not allowing pollutants to go down the stream, down the storm drain that result in the stream, not to put oil, not to put other wastes into that system. The city has also said that they would be willing to provide some public service announcements to air over the community network that would help educate the citizens for that, for those efforts, and to show them what they can do to help protect the water quality and habitat within the Hunting Creek area. And then, finally, a couple of staff members have participated regularly on the partnership meetings that have helped direct this effort to improve and implement this watershed management plan, and that's been an important part because they've had very good insight and input into what needs to be done. So, the message here is, is I'd just like to emphasize that these activities are an important component of the watershed management plan, and that the city's continued involvement and support to implementing these activities is needed to successfully meet the grant requirements. And we appreciate everything and all the support that you folks have provided to the partnership. Thank you.
Jim, any questions? Jim?
Yes. Jim, in the last few years, we've had the big construction projects there on the highway, down the 18, and the big construction at Broaden Hospital. Has that impacted the Hunting Creek very much?
Well, DOT does what they can to, and what they're required to, to put sediment control measures in place. Obviously, this last year has been a challenge for sediment control with all the rain we've had. I'm sure that some sediment- I'm sure that some sediment has escaped from their structures, but I've seen them maintain them. They've, they've come a long way in terms of what they do today versus what they did 20 years ago. So I would have, I would, I would not be telling the truth if I didn't say, yes, some sediment has gotten off of those sites and, and into the stream, but I think they've done a, a very good job in trying to minimize what has run off from that area. As far as the hospital project goes, they have included some retention basins to ameliorate the stormwater runoff from that property as part of the project. And so I would say that while yes, there's probably some sediment running off during the construction project, once that site is stabilized and the, and the stormwater structures, features that are put in are, are set up and completed, that, you know, they will have done what they need to do to minimize the impacts from that, from that new construction.
Now, your organization is not a policing organization, is that correct?
No. We, we, we are a, a private consulting firm that has a mission to implement conservation-oriented type projects. We work with nonprofits, we work for, for, for profits, and we, we facilitate getting that type of work done. We try to also utilize that opportunity to educate folks on how to do the projects the right way and with the least amount of impact while at the same time achieving the maximum amount of ecological improvements to, to whatever project we work on.
So you will, you do have some impact on the DOT and an organization like?
Um, no, we do not have a direct impact. We're not a regulatory, we're not a regulatory agency of any type. We're, we're a for-profit consulting firm that does ecological improvement type projects. If we have the opportunity to input on any types of projects of that nature, we do have stormwater specialists and erosion control specialists on staff that can advise on what they think needs to be done in order to, to minimize any impacts from a project of that nature.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Ronnie?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for this privilege of, of speaking tonight. Wanted to educate the public, we do have a vistery in our midst. Most of you know that I'm very involved with Rotary International, it's the world's largest service organization. There are 532 districts around the world and of course 532 governors. I serve as a governor for the whole western part of the state, 22 western counties, but we have the governor from the eastern part of the state with us tonight. He covers Wilmington, Fayetteville, Morehead City, Pine Hill Shores. He lives in a beautiful part of the state, but we hope he'll be moving soon to the most beautiful part of the state. It's my friend Andy Chusid and his first lady, Ron, if they'll please stand. They're visiting with us tonight.
Glad to have you all with us. Thank you, Ron, appreciate it. Couple of important announcements. We had a city manager many years ago in the late 60s, early 70s, Cy Brooks, who was here for a number of years and passed away a short time ago. Cy was a good manager and brought a lot of innovative things to our city. Also Sheldon Stevenson. Sheldon is our chaplain emeritus who passed away Saturday. Sheldon was also chaplain for our public safety department and rode many hours with our public safety officers as they went around Morganton and was so dedicated to this community, did so much to make sure that Morganton was a beautiful place. And I greatly appreciate his friendship to me and his friendship to the entire city council and all our public safety officers. He's going to be greatly missed. His family is here this week. The services for his funeral will be at the First United Methodist Church Saturday at 11:00 AM. And again, I want to give all of our thoughts to the three children. Mark, I talked to Mark today and he's got another son from up in the upstate New York and a daughter that's a professor at Purdue and a bunch of grandchildren of Sheldon's. But he'll be greatly missed and he was, he was a gentleman, a scholar, and a, and a great pastor. I think that's all. Sally, you have anything else?
No.
Power Agency?
Nothing at this time.
Consent agenda, Sally.
Okay. The consent agenda before you tonight includes four individual items. Those items are considered to be non-controversial and would ask that you consider those in one motion unless someone would like an item removed and discussed separately.
I'd like to remove the franchise item from the consent agenda.
All right, and I'll make a motion to accept. Well, let me, let's go ahead and pass it all and not get that one until?
Yeah, it's item 11.
Remove item D.
Subsection D.
Okay, all right, but I want to make a motion, we accept the consent agenda A, B, and C as is.
Second.
We have a motion second, no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now item D.
That was just the vote to remove the one item from the consent agenda, right?
Did you vote to remove?
Let's, let's go for the vote to move it then.
Yeah, then you have to approve what's left on the consent agenda.
That's what I thought I was doing. Okay, I'll make a motion, remove the D, which I thought would be removed on his request. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And the other ones for A, B, and C.
Okay, I think, I got a little confused.
I'll make a motion that we approve A, B, and C.
Okay.
Awesome.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now D.
Would you like me to go ahead and address D? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subsection D on the consent agenda was consideration of application for a state cable franchise for Compass Cable. And there's a brief explanatory summary, but I'll try to review that if I can. When Compass was established in the early 1990s, the city council at the time voted to extend a city franchise for, to itself for Compass Cable for a 20-year period. At that time municipalities in North Carolina granted or denied cable TV franchises to both commercial and other providers. However, and that was customarily done by all cities and towns, however, in 2007, the state legislature changed the law to completely do away with the local franchising of cable TV and to make it a statewide cable franchising registry. That doesn't mean that the, that the franchises were for the whole state, it just meant that providers, cable TV providers registered their franchise territory with the Secretary of State. This did not however affect existing city-issued franchises. Ours has now run out from the early 90s. The, the statute in 2007 didn't specifically mention municipal-owned franchises. As you may know, there are only four cities in North Carolina that operate their own, own and operate their own cable system, including Morganton. The statute didn't refer to that and I think a strong argument can be made that the statute has no application whatsoever to the city. However, out of an abundance of caution, I believe we should file the notice to obtain a franchise or to file the franchise with the Secretary of State. It's a simple matter of a notice, there's no, the Secretary of State doesn't award the franchise, you simply file the notice and then make an annual report that you are operating your cable TV system. And I would add that the, the language in the notice, I've checked with the attorneys for the other cities that operate these systems and have adopted the language that one of them used, which basically says in the application, we don't think we need to do this, but just to be clear, we're filing this. If there are any questions, I'll try to answer those.
With that explanation, I'd make a motion to authorize the filing for and obtaining a cable television franchise for the city of Morganton from the North Carolina Secretary of State.
Second. All right, we have a motion second, any other discussion of that item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New business, consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of property by the Morganton Redevelopment Commission. Lee and George Carr, would you all like to come to the podium and just in case we have any questions? Lee snuck in.
Yes.
Here he is.
Yeah.
Okay, Sally?
The redevelopment commission has received an offer to, for a purchase of 2.63 acres of land on the 400 block across from us. The offer is for $400,000, the offer is from Beacon Management, and it is a senior housing project that is proposed. At the redevelopment commission meeting on December the 9th, the commission authorized to give a notice of that sale, seeking any upset bids, none were received. And so before you tonight is the consideration to concur and affirm the decision of the redevelopment commission to sell this property for this project.
Okay, any questions of Lee and George or Lee?
George may want to say something.
George, you want to say anything?
No. This, as you know, we've been down this path before and we're not successful due to some state agency policy changes last year. We think the policies have been reconstructed for this year in a far more favorable way. So we're, we're very optimistic and we've got our fingers crossed and we're going to do our very, very best to, to make sure the application is, is approved.
Project looks better and I wish you luck and for luck for everybody because it's a, it's a great project. And this, and I appreciate you bringing your wife with you by the way for the ride down here. Ms. Carr, thank you for bringing him. Okay, okay, I'll make a motion that we approve authorizing the sale of property by the, yeah, whatever.
Redevelopment.
Yeah.
Redevelopment.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion.
I'd just like to state that George's associate was, he visited with the, with the redevelopment commission just a few weeks ago and brought this back to our attention and he's tweaked the plan and I think the tweaks that have been done will make, along with the state agency cooperation, will make this one a success. Thank you, George.
We hope so, and that individual is my son-in-law and I am very, very proud of him and thank you for receiving him so well.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, George, thank you, all have a safe trip.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Next item is consideration of approval of a contract to purchase real property from Charter Communications, Sally.
Currently, you know that on Vine Arden Road, there is an old standpipe water tank that doesn't look very pretty, that holds numerous antennas that receive signals from the off-air channels for Compass. And we have to make some decisions about refurbishing that tank, if we're going to leave that situation, or removing those antennas and putting them up in some other way. As we were investigating this, we found out that Charter actually owns some property on High Peak Mountain. And they have a tower on that mountain that's about 114 feet that is, that was used years ago by them for the very same purpose. It came to our attention that they were interested in selling that property, so we have been working with them for several months and talking about the possibility of us buying that. We have worked out an agreement with them. There's about one and a half acres of land that goes along with the existing tower and there's a small building located on the property. And we have worked out an arrangement with them that we would purchase that for $140,000. The tax value of that is currently $203,000. And we would relocate the antenna from Vine Arden up to High Peak, giving us an opportunity, we believe, to have a better signal that we would receive. And Bill is here and can answer any more details and questions. We would co-locate a line on the existing poles that come down the mountain to ultimately connect that end to our head end.
Mr. Mayor, may I add two, two points that I think I, I left out of the summary. One, just to be clear, the $140,000 purchase price, the contract would require one-tenth of that to be deposited as earnest money after the signing of the contract pending the closing of the sale. And the other thing is that the Charter would reserve, is be subject to an easement for Charter to keep a line that crosses a part of this property that we would be acquiring.
Okay. Any questions of Bill? Sally?
I've got some questions, Mayor. Do we need a motion first or?
Go ahead.
The life of the tower, Sally, I think an engineer has been to, to there and given us some estimation of the tower, life of the tower, Bill. I'd hate to buy it and then two years later it rusted away and we'd be stuck.
I'd hate to have that happen too.
Okay, any idea what the engineer said?
Yes, I got an engineer from Quest Tower Corporation out of Asheville. They came over and they're really good at this, this is what they do. They inspected the tower and deemed it to be in good shape. It could use a paint job. Typically, you know, towers like this last about 70 years if you, if you maintain them. You need to paint them about every eight years or so. But it's, it's steel and it's really solid. And they, they were pretty impressed with the condition it was in.
It'll be sufficient for our needs.
Absolutely. This tower was put up initially by a cable system in the days before they had fiber optics where they could run from Charlotte to here with their signals. And it was probably be, before they even had the repeaters that we're using right now off Smith and Baker Mountain. Those all came in later. At the time, they needed to be on top of the nearest mountains, so they had line of sight to Charlotte and all the other communities that we received signals from. That's the ideal situation. We have been using ever since 1991, these repeater signals in a lot of cases. And they are, they're weaker, they're more susceptible to problems. When a repeater goes down, it could be because the power on the mountain went off, lightning strikes, vandalism. But the, the stations themselves focus on their main transmitter in Charlotte. If the repeater out there somewhere goes down, well, they know it's going to take them time to get to it, haul parts up there, get it fixed. So it's not, it's not as reliable delivery system to us. So this will be the first time ever that we would have line of sight. Like the complaints we get on channel nine.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Yeah, I mean, and 16, you know, those, those repeaters, sometimes they switch the channels with flip-flop. And, and it's just a variety of problems that we will do away with. We will be bypassing those repeaters.
So what I hear you saying, I think, is will be more efficient, more effective, is that correct?
Absolutely. The signals will be a lot stronger. We'll have our own fiber running right down into Morganton to carry the signals. There won't be much up there, once we have it all cleaned up, operational, it may require one visit every couple of weeks or a month just to go up and make sure everything's okay, there's not trees laying against the building or something of, of that nature. But it would be a vast improvement over any off-air signals we've ever had. And we can, we can acquire this for less than it would cost to paint the tower at Vine Arden.
Are there several, excuse me, are there several towers on the Vine Arden tank?
Tank, I should say.
Correct now, will they all be moved to this?
Several antennas and?
We have 12 off-air stations we receive. That, and the tower that's up there still has the VH and UHF antennas on it that Charter left there. So we may not have to move a whole lot up there.
Yeah.
But we need the buildings there, the cables coming down are there. I mean, it was designed exactly for what we need. So once we acquire it, we can, I'll take a TV up there and an analyzer, we'll look at our signals and see what we have. Anything that needs repairs, we will repair. But we'll be in a much better situation.
And I'm not technical, it will need a feeder line or something to help me with that technology.
It'll be fiber optics. It, it, there won't be any power requirements along the route. It'll be powered by a laser from the building that's up there, right down into our, our fiber here in Morganton, which will go back to our head end and then into the system. So you should see a lot better pictures and better quality pictures.
When that happens, will the water tank at Vine Arden be removed?
That would be the plan.
Bill, I wanted to ask you.
I'm through. Okay.
You want? Bill, I wanted to ask you what the possibility would be that we would be able to advertise this service, that, that we might get more people who need the antenna service, that we could get more customers to, to use this tower and thereby helping to defer part of the cost that it's going to cost us to purchase it.
Yes, it would, it would enhance our broadcast basic tier, or at least, most of the least expensive tier. You know, now people can get broadcast stations from the satellite dishes in the sky, but we, if we could offer them right off the main transmitters here, that's something no one else is actually doing. no one else is actually doing. So, yeah, we can advertise the improved quality of our broadcast signals, and that should help us gain...
I'm not sure that's what Forrest was asking. What he's asking is could we lease out space on the tower?
Well, you want to lease, lease space on the tower?
Is that what you were talking?
Well, no, I'm just asking if we can get additional customers that, like, that are using the antennas that are on the water tank now. If, I understand that this fiber-optic cable can handle hundreds of different signals.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah. I mean, we could pick up other signals and transport them for other...
Yeah. Well, say we could have the other towns, like possibly Glen Alpine or Helder Bend or some of those, that, that we could get contracts with them to use our tower, and we could receive their signals, and it could go through the fiber optic to, to them for their communication system.
I believe legally, we have retransmission agreements with all these stations for our use. Now, if, if we were to provide those signals to someone else, they, I believe they would need an agreement as well with each broadcast station. We can pick them up and haul it to them, but they would still have to have some kind of a retransmission agreement, I believe.
And currently, it's only TV signal. It's video signal. It's not any other kind of communications.
And I believe that's right. That's why we pay retransmission fees. They don't give it away free anymore unless you just have an antenna on your house.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for purchase and sale with Charter Communications for two tracts totaling approximately 1,520, no, I'm sorry, 1.527 acres. We could get it for that, including existing 114-foot communication tower.
I'll second that move.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Last item is consideration of an appointment for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Lee's talked to David Kirk, Dr. Kirk, and he would like to join Planning and Zoning. And I make a motion that we accept David Kirk to be on Planning and Zoning. All in favor say aye. Okay. Anything further from any of the council members? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.